Write that down.
Call. Jay?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Self, President Vicki?
Here.
Steve, perhaps, and I haven't heard anything about it.
His time. I talk on his time.
Okay, consent agenda. Any questions on the agenda? Any questions on the minutes? Only one meeting. Okay, financial reports.
As far as the financials, I don't think there's anything different. One thing, if you look at the first page where they list like the general fund, the building fund. I want to bring this up in case you have questions, I'll have a team explain it. If you look at the March receipts on that page, it shows a negative. And you're down close to the bottom on the state of Nebraska, state of portionment. It seems negative on the receipts, a little confusing. We received a payment from the state on the proportionment, and then we got a notice from them that they had overpaid us. So had to give the money back, and what they did.
And I don't think it was just us. It sounded like it was general across the state.
So they deducted the money from special ed.
From the special ed payment. They just deducted it. But I have to show it.
Yeah, we wanted to be able to have some paperwork of what where that money went. So she wanted to make sure we had an entry there, initial document for the auditor, so.
Any claims?
I'm sure somebody sourced gas. Does that ditch building have a home meter?
That's a sore subject.
It's way easier.
That is a real sore subject. But if you don't do that, they can't keep it straight. I actually send them in separate envelopes.
Really?
We would spend hours trying to straighten out the source gas bills. And I, I just said, that's it. So I write separate checks and send separate envelopes, and we have not had a problem since.
So is it meter for each school? Is that what the new?
There is the egg shop, the elementary, the high school, the bus garage, and the gas wash.
You could not put them all at one on.
You can't even stick them in one.
They could not total them up and come up with the right amount.
I have a problem with the church with those, with two, with the parsonage and the, and I put the separate numbers.
You didn't count.
And then we would fight with them about late payments every month.
They would tell us, oh, you're late, you didn't pay. Because they put it on some other.
If you get credit on one account, not credit in.
Uh huh, exactly.
Sorry, I brought that up.
Yeah, I saw that.
No questions? I didn't take a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
One second. Mike, solid. All in favor? Steve?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Self, yes. Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Motion carrying. We're now at the portion of our agenda set aside for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening. We request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less. We will advise you when that five minute time period has left. Please remember this is a public meeting for the conduct of the business of the Plainview Public School District. Offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should be further advised that there's no legal protection for any, any comments that are made. Any public comments?
Okay, I'm here in support of the JK program. And I've got the same feelings I had last year. But I have two concerns, and one of them is that we wait till the middle of April to make this decision. We've got so many parents that, you know, because when I conference in February, I tell them that I think JK would benefit their child. Okay, so that's been over two months ago, and they still do not know, is there a JK program? Is there not? We had roundup. So should we go to roundup? Should we not go to roundup? I could not tell them, because I did not know if there was going to be a JK program or not. So I think the decision needs to be made before the middle of April, and it would help us a lot. And I also think another concern that we need to think about this year is what are our kindergarten numbers going to be next year if we don't have JK? Because I'm not sure on that one either. And then, right now, we have fourteen kids registered for preschool, maybe a fifteen if they move to Plainview. They haven't decided if they're going to move to Plainview or not. So we've still got room for at least five kids. This year, we never really turned that many kids away. There was one family, and I don't even think they stayed six weeks in the town. And then they moved. And then the little girl that her parents moved into the district, that we didn't have home for. But we have not turned that many kids away. And I'm just speaking in support of the JK program.
So from my head decision earlier, do we need to have kindergarten roundup earlier so we know how many kids we're dealing with?
No, if anything, we need kindergarten roundup later, so that the parents know, okay, JK is an option. Because the kids go to kindergarten roundup because their parents feel they need some kind of, you know, acclamation to the program if they're going to do it next year. But then they, you know, kids, well, I want to go to JK now, I want to go to kindergarten. So they need to have a roundup after the decision is.
Okay, so maybe I said that wrong. So we need to know how many kids we're going to have in preschool before we make the decision. When is that decided on? How many kids are going to be?
Well, I mean, we've had, you know, kind of open enrollment, and right now, like I said, there's fourteen kids on the list, fifteen maybe if this family decides to move.
But if we would have made this decision a month or two ago, what have you known that preschool figure? Because we kind of need to know whether they'll all fit in one class, or we're looking at a class and a half, or to help make that decision also, don't we?
I don't think you're aware what happened when we bought a class and a half of preschoolers.
Yeah. I, I'm not sure why this is every year now. I guess that little segment, why you, we discuss this every year. How many years did you not discuss it was JK, and that, and we had large amount of kids? I mean, what, how many years did we have preschool?
I just want to say something right there, though. We almost lost our certification one year due to that fact. We had fourteen kids in there, and Mr. Alt's certificate was on the line, mine was on the line, and so was school, our school accreditation. Because nothing was checked into. There was just, that was my first year here, and it was a disaster. We had fourteen kids or so in there, and we almost, we got called by the State Department. We got investigated, and it was not a very pleasant.
Was that because of the numbers, or was that because of the age?
We didn't have the proper kids in there, we didn't have this.
That was the age. So you have to be careful on the ages.
But we are careful now. Well, yes, and we're going to make sure we're extremely careful, because losing accreditation is not.
No, no. I just was wondering why it's brought up every year, when previous to last year, it wasn't a yearly discussion.
Board policy currently, currently states that there will either be two sections of preschool, or there will be one section of preschool and one section of kindergarten, so.
Okay.
And the board needs to.
So they need to do that yearly?
They're going to do.
Okay. I just, since the numbers are smaller, unfortunately, in our kids coming to school than they were before we discussed it, I was just curious.
And I'm speaking as a parent, and my son has a July birthday, and I do not want him to go on to kindergarten. So right now, he's receiving a year of preschool. So there has to be something there for him, otherwise we'll have to find somewhere for him to go. Because I feel like he'll graduate at seventeen, he needs that extra year of academics, they need to know more earlier on. So I would like some support for him to be able to go to. So that's why I would like JK for him to go to.
But there's nothing to say we can't change board policy and have JK every year either.
You know, that would require a change of policy, just the board needs. Well, I mean, you can change, say you're, you're going to do this every year, and you could do that.
I think maybe the way it was set up this way is because, at that time, we were borderline whether we had different classes of preschool, if we had enough kids.
I think it was set up that way originally, because looking at the numbers, you've got one teacher. So you're either going to have, and you're talking about basically half-day programs. So you're going to do preschool, and junior kindergarten, or you're going to do preschools. Preschool, the controlling thing on that, you can only have twenty preschool students in a session, according to rule eleven. So if you have twenty-one, you've got to have two sections where somebody gets left out.
Any other comments? Yes?
Can I, can I change topic, or you want to stay on this topic?
No, whatever you want.
Okay. The co-op thing's going to be brought up here in a little bit, and I talked to Mr. Alt, Mrs. Novicki about this, and I've been thinking about this for years. Ever since this seventh grade class has been in kindergarten, and I started to talk to Mr. Clues and stuff about it. And, oh, it's a big decision that you guys got to make, and I'm glad I don't, I'm not the one making the decision, but, you know, I, I am a little concerned with, with what was, was told to our administrators about just going and joining them, going over and joining them, and I know that they discussed, talked to them about it. I just want to make sure that it's a true co-op. I, I am a little puzzled as to why they didn't want to do all sports. You know, I, they had, they had girls' high school sports over here this year. They had basketball, they had no seniors and, and one junior. So I don't understand their motivation to just do a few sports. I do think that if we go together as a co-op in junior high, I think that's what was presented, and you guys will talk about this more later. But if we do go together as a co-op in junior high, that I really feel like there should be a timeline put on them, so, so we're not, it's not a parasitic relationship here. Whereas, we are going to go through this period here in about, for about a four-year period, or a four or five-year period, that we're having way low in numbers. And if we just spend time co-opping with them in junior high until they get a need for their numbers to get low after they get rid of these four or five years of real solid numbers, that, you know, then they say, hey, we've been doing this long enough, let's go together then. You know, I think that, I really feel like what we should do is say, hey, we would co-op with you in junior high, but in two years from now, when the football classification gets redone, because that's kind of what everything's driven by, because every, all the other stuff is pretty much year to year. But when the football classifications come back up in two years, we want to go together with you. So we got a timeline instead of just whenever it works for them. And then another thing I was thinking on that order, it's mostly like a football thing right now, because wrestling-wise, we already went through our lowest year that we're going to have. And, you know, we had forty-five kids K through five in our low kids program. So our numbers are going to be coming back up again. But if we do go together with them in junior high, hopefully it is eleven-man that we go, that they play together in junior high. I don't know whether that was talked with Mr. Alt or not on that, but if we just go with them as, as eight-man, I don't think that's planning for their future at all. Because if we go together, we will be C-two, so we'll be playing eleven-man football. That's just something I was thinking about on this call.
Thank you. Any other ones? Okay. Discussion agenda, review board policy, six one one point oh two, student promotion retention or acceleration.
Okay, after looking through that policy, and I shared this with Vicki, one of the things that we looked at might possibly need to change, is you look at the very last paragraph on the first page of that. The last sentence in that starts off, for students in grades one through three, parents must be notified. I wonder if that shouldn't be changed to K through three, if you're talking about retention. And on the second page, the last paragraph, it talks about students with exceptional talents, may with permission, the principal or parents take classes beyond. Will we do that in high school? I don't, do you think it would be better if we put secondary students with exceptional? Because I don't know if we want to do that in the elementary, move them up to another grade or anything.
Has it ever been done?
What's that?
Have you ever done it?
No, I haven't.
Well, the teachers do a lot of things. I mean, we have the iPad class, and the teachers go and, they do a lot of differentiated instruction anyway. They have accelerated math that they can use in the math classroom. If they need to, just like we do for the kids that are behind, they can give them more challenging things.
But you've never advanced a student.
I'm so shocked up here. That's, that's history.
We used to advance, of course, the math, we, when they get older in math, you know, but not in.
Not grade.
But we've never skipped a whole.
I don't think, not a whole grade.
Well, whole subject level. Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of. There's just a lot of things that they can do now.
It's possible you could get students that are advanced, that you might have to do that. It's possible you could, yes. But you can do so much more now with, you know, taking classes online, or with doing different situations. You used to move the whole grade. And if, if you did have that, they could always come and ask the board to do that, too. So I don't know if you, if you want to change wording in that or not, to something that we, which we, we talked a little bit about.
It doesn't really create any problems with it, does it, either? Because it can't, you still have to, okay, I even, a parent comes and wants it done, it's still your decision.
It's not the parent's choice, it's still a administrative, administrative choice. What I'll do is I'll, I'll probably bring this back next month, just for our first and second reading on that, if we'll change.
So just to K through three instead of one through three?
Okay.
Student honors and awards?
The question we've had on, on this one is in the last, the first paragraph, the last sentence, says, students who have not attended the school district for at least five semesters may not be, may not be eligible for some honors and awards. Again, it doesn't say that will not be five semesters. You know, that would be their, after the first semester sophomore year. I, I don't know with kids moving out, in and out as much anymore, if, if that might be too long a time. Maybe we don't need to.
Or maybe not even have anything there.
Yeah. You know.
Well, then you run into the valedictorian and salutatorian thing, and they come for one semester. Should that kid be eligible to be our valedictorian and salutatorian?
We could get rid of that.
I thought.
I think that's a whole new topic.
I thought we kind of addressed that. Most of you won't remember, and we had, we had discussion, even if Mr. Clues was here, and we talked about the, I'm going to say the, awarding more credit for classes and that.
Yes, mhm.
I thought we talked about, you know, that how the students happen to be here so long to be valedictorian or salutatorian. I couldn't, I can't find it, the wording. So I, I think it got, either it never got in there or got left out, so.
No, we talked about it.
Yeah, I remember.
So what do you want to change on that?
Well, I guess, just to ask, do you think the five semesters is too much? Because that would mean after middle or sophomore year. Should be here the last two years, should be here a year and a half, I mean.
And you, you had open here, because you have may not be eligible.
Yeah, and, and this doesn't necessarily, I mean, it, it, and I, and that's a good point, Mike, because it doesn't say that you're going to hold this to everything either, or anything, but.
But it's vague enough that if somebody shows up and wants to be salutatorian and valedictorian, we're going to, they may not be able to be eligible because we say so? I think it's kind of vague and we get put in kind of.
You'd like to have it more structured.
Yeah, that kind of is very open.
You want three semesters on there, is that what you're thinking?
I don't know what I'm thinking. I think five and a one, don't you think that?
Kind of seems like.
I mean.
If you've been here.
If you've been here at least two of your school years, I think you should be eligible for valedictorian and salutatorian. Because according to this, Mr. Alt and I can say, you haven't been here long enough, so you don't get to be the valedictorian. And then that, if we forget about it in three years later, when Mr. Alt and I are making this decision, we forget what we did three years ago and we let somebody do it. Those are things that kind of haunt you.
Five doesn't seem like a long time.
Three would be bad.
Three would be bad.
I think four.
Four?
I guess one, four here.
That's kind of where we were talking, was at least, you know, half of their career needs to be sit-in here if they want to be valedictorian and salutatorian. And maybe just add that in. How did we talk about that? I can't remember what we said. Because we were talking about valedictorian and salutatorian, maybe specifically identifying those two. And maybe just very specifically.
You couldn't find anything, oh, yeah, we, I know that we have that thing where they have honors, they get more points, don't they?
Yeah.
So maybe we need to look at that and, and change some of that, change it there.
And that's in the handbook, though.
But that, yeah, that's going to need to be board policy. This will have to be.
Oh, that's not board policy?
Not in the handbook necessarily, but board policy.
Well, it's technically a policy, but it's not, it's not a policy.
But it's not, but it's not acceptable. Okay, three or four?
Four.
Four.
I'm going to go four.
Do you want to change that wording then, to take out the may? To make it mandatory four, instead of may not be?
To be eligible for your present awards.
So they can't have any academic.
We can say some.
It's still vague again, because some honors present, they'll be able to.
I think we specifically need to say valedictorian and salutatorian. To, to get those two honors, you have to be here for four semesters, because they can get honor scholar. What else do we have? Kids, help me. Honor scholar.
In the National Honor Society.
Yeah, National Honor Society, they can get into that.
And they should be able to.
Right.
And if they're in somewhere else, they're automatically.
Okay, so we're going to change this to students who have not attended the school district for at least four semesters will not be eligible for valedictorian and salutatorian.
Yes.
Honors. But they will be eligible for other honors.
Yeah, because they, they have to just prove themselves with the honor scholar and National Honor Society, those kinds of things.
Okay.
Because if, if we get a kid that's on National Honor Society somewhere else, according to National Honor Society, they're on at your school, once they're in there.
Students who have not attended the school district for at least four semesters will not be eligible for valedictorian and salutatorian, but will be eligible for other honors. Am I all right with that?
We'll bring that back. Bring that back next month. I didn't have anything on agreed guidelines, for shame.
We'll give you a heads up on that one. We're probably going to have to forget, we talked about, and Dean's sitting there, so he can help there. When we come to changing the student handbook and we adopted the conversion chart for college credits, we're probably going to have to take that out.
Why?
Well, because we're not supposed to know grades anymore. They put in.
College grades.
With, only with their permission are we supposed to get them. Now, if they want dual credit, we have to know, but if they just decide they only want it for college credit, say a kid took a class and they have all their requirements for math, and they just want it for college credit, we don't know what that grade is. So we may have to look at taking that out. Because he went to a workshop this past summer, and they changed all of that. So it's a lot harder to have parent-teacher conferences, and you can't even know the grades. I mean, one benefit is that he's here, and he knows what our kids have, that he puts them in, but they kind of have to give us permission.
Just dual credit, then we don't, then you don't have to worry about that.
I mean, if they want it for dual credit, we have to know that they're going to use them, so we may have to look at that. And I think there is less of a, just as a heads up, because that would.
Well, just dual credit, then we already know their grade.
Yeah, because they want it.
So that doesn't apply there, because it's the same grade as college, or at the high school level.
But we have that conversion chart, we're going to have to.
Okay, discussed co-op sponsored, cooperative sponsorships with neighboring districts. Passing around. She here, then I'll talk a little bit about this.
Did you send out letters to the parents?
I called them.
You called them?
Mm-hmm. And I have all their information right here.
Okay.
Okay, just a little bit about this note, which I, we met, I guess, a week ago today with Mrs. Peterson, Mr. Clemmon, and Mrs. Dredge. Creighton, and talked about co-op in. What I handed out is basically the notes that Mrs. Peterson typed up of things that we agreed that we discussed, okay? And we kind of wanted to do this so there's no confusion by coming out later about, we talked about this, we talked about that. These are the things we wrote, kind of talked about, so. You know, one of the things, as we began the discussion, one of the things that Creighton was definitely concerned about was transportation issues, because they do not have their own buses, so it becomes, you know, a little bit more of a problem with them scheduling, if you're going to schedule something for every day. And they were, I would say, fairly reluctant at first to even talk about, you know, a sharing where, a full sharing type thing. But after we talked about it for a while, at least, we were going to talk about, you know, doing that. Kind of focused on, this would be for next year. We focused on boys' junior high sports, football, basketball, and wrestling. And the principals seemed to think that they basically would allow seventh and eighth periods. Seventh period would be like a traveling time. Eighth period would be a practice time, where we'd finish up practices probably, you know, around the time schools, about quarter before, something like that, and then there'd be transportation back. Parents would, would be responsible for picking their children up after practice at school. So if, if we were taking students over to Creighton, they'd come back here on the bus, the parents would be responsible, because it'd be after school. Like, same thing for Creighton, if they come over here and they go back to Creighton, parents would be responsible for that part of it. We talked about all the day to practice, not, not day to day, but probably by week, since it does be easier for people to keep track of it, and where they're at on a day-to-day basis. We talked about equipment. This would be, for example, football equipment. We would be responsible for pads for our kids, helmets. I think we both have white helmets, which is one good thing. You know, it worked out pretty good with that. The only problem we'd run into would be jerseys. We talked about having red and black jerseys, and put like a CP on the jersey or something, if we wanted to put something on it. Games, we would try to divide the best we could, sharing those. And transportation would be arranged by, depending on the site. A situation there, let's say you were playing burglary, it would probably make sense if we were going to take a bus and go, we could maybe go through Creighton. I don't know if they have that road there, but maybe it's on the way, pick their kids up. Or, you know, if we're playing Osmond, maybe they come through here and pick our kids up and go to Osmond. Now, if we're going to, let's say, Wausau, it wouldn't make a lot of sense for us to go to Creighton and pick their kids up, with them to come here. So we'd just both be responsible for getting our own kids there. But that's, that's pretty much anything to work out. Each school would provide a coach and pay for the coach, depending for our own coaching staff, or schedules and that type of thing. We did talk about the numbers. Plainview is going to be low for the next couple of years. After that, it's going to be Creighton's turn, they're going to be low. And I think they are very much aware of that. So we'd like to work together as the numbers change for both districts. We talked about the junior high wrestling, and, and this, I don't know, we talked about doing the wrestling over there. They, they do something different with their junior high wrestling. They, they do something different with their junior high wrestling. All of, if I understand this right, all of their boys wrestle seventh period. They all wrestle. Then eighth period, they have the kids that are interested in wrestling competition wise. They go to meets and that type thing, and they wrestle eighth period. So that seventh period would be where the problem would be created because they're gonna have quite a number of boys compared possibly to what we have. So we did talk about maybe at least for next year, going over there for wrestling. And then the other thing we talked about, you know, if we talk about it this board meeting tonight, they're gonna talk about it, they're gonna use the same list, talk about it at their board meeting. You know, if you as a board feel we wanna move forward, if they as a board feel they wanna move forward, then we probably need to schedule a special meeting to act on. There's no action item tonight, one way or the other, uh, uh, just discussion, so. Those are the things we talked about, and, um, I guess, I left the meeting thinking that, you know, at least there's a possibility of it.
So track isn't an issue, we have enough kids?
We didn't really talk about tracks, but I could probably have enough kids on that. The other thing, you know, most of that is individual type things, like you're gonna do a relay or something, but.
Why, why is wrestling different than the other ones?
Can't answer that, Bob, I don't know. I don't. Dean, do you know, do you know about their situation in junior high wrestling?
We wouldn't co-op wrestling. They just run theirs a little bit different. Our kids will not go with them for seventh period and eighth period to wrestle.
According to my wife, they also do that in junior high volleyball. But they have, uh, have everybody practicing junior high volleyball, and, uh, they, uh, then they just bring them all along, and there's a team that Randy says, well, we really don't work with them because they only do it part of the time. So I don't know whether that's true or not. I know that Randy's said, he's always had him, uh, everybody wrestles, because he's the PE teacher. So everybody wrestles seventh period, but then eighth period, um, only the ones sticking around that, uh, are going to compete, I guess. Uh, that's kinda what he told you too, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
And, uh, you know, I, I guess, whatever our facility is.
Why, and just, I know this is a good start, but why just boys? Do, are they interested in doing everything?
I think at this point, I guess, we thought we would get by with numbers yet.
Yeah, we have not.
It's gonna be tight, if we can get by.
About twelve.
Eleven.
Girls?
And I, I don't know where they're at, I think they're about the same numbers, I'm not sure.
That's girls that are, that are gonna go out for volleyball, basketball, that's totally girls in two grades.
That's both.
Both, they're all going now.
Also, Miss Novick, do you wanna share, could, I think, Miss Novick can talk, call parents and talk to them, so.
Well, this is my, my little sign up sheet that we did, um, and so they all have it here, so we know exactly what they're doing. Um, again, this is two kids doing no sports whatsoever in junior high. That's how few kids we have in, in both of those areas. So when I called parents, um, I tried two people twice and they never returned my call. I told them why I was calling so that they didn't think it was bad, and they hear bad news. So I told them why I was calling. Um, I explained to them that in no way did this mean, because they said no or yes, or whatever they agreed to, that that's how you guys would vote. We just kinda wanted to know what their thoughts were. Um, I had two tell me absolutely not, they would rather get beat seventy-six to six than do anything. And the rest of them all said they were fine with it as long as it was a true co-op. Meaning we would have a coach with our team, we would have some say, so that it wasn't just.
It's a fifty-fifty view.
Yeah.
And. How many was that then?
You're just the whatever, I believe, that's kind of what you told me. None.
So you just called the parents of the boys?
Mm-hmm. Because that's all we had talked about.
I think we need to move together as a board, you know, come together and have another meeting. I mean, because here's my, I don't, if we're gonna do it, let's do it. Boys and girls. So if we have to get together and have a meeting and talk about it, so be it, but I don't think we, we take the girls off the table, I mean.
Well, at this point, we don't really have much of a choi- a choice.
Well, that doesn't mean when we have a meeting with them, we can't say, voice it, our opinion then.
That's true, but I'm, I'm just saying, at this point, we're kind of down to the wire here, if we want anything from them.
The other portion of that is, is, you know, I have a problem reading the paper where, you know, they're just gonna absorb our boys the way one of their people said it. So they need to know that this is a consolid, that this is a true co-op.
Correct. And I do think they, they understand that for the boys. And there's also some things that, that I know about that whole newspaper article. When we talked, you have to remember, when did we go to that meeting? November? And this was published in March? Did we meet with them in November? Who went to Creighton? I can't remember.
I did.
Was that November or somewhere in there, Vicki?
Yeah, November or early, early December.
So, what was, I mean, and so we haven't really met with them after that. And so this was published March twenty-third or something in the paper?
Oh, in Cre- in Creighton?
Yes.
Yeah, I have it on my phone exactly.
Yes, I, and I've been notified of this several times, and I don't know if Randy even knows that he said those things, I mean.
Who wrote the article in the paper or something?
Their newspaper person? I assume. So I, I'm, I just, you know, at this point, if we don't move on this, nothing is going to happen with the boys.
I agree.
Because we have to meet, we have to get this decided, or nothing will happen with them.
The newspaper article and the discussion is why we wanted to do basically the same list of things. Bring that, this board, just have any statement to their board tonight, so. Get away from this, they said.
Exactly.
Who said, and what's the interpretation of this, so.
That they had indicated any, that they had talked about this at all at their board meetings, that they showed any interest as a board, or has it just been dropped since we met with them last?
They talked about it last month, I believe.
We, we called them, you called.
Well, I called Mrs. Peterson. Probably right before we sent last month's board packet out. And she said she would put it on, I think she brought it up on the superintendent's, uh, by a, a discussion, not a, not an agenda item. We brought it up in her superintendent's report. Because she said she somewhat got criticized for that, I guess. I said, hey, that wouldn't be a problem, quitting there as long as you board talked about it, didn't make a, didn't vote on anything anyway. And, uh, and then we, we had talked about it last, last month, and with the idea that following last month's meeting, then we would get, we would contact each other again and see kinda where we were at, what we wanted to do, so. Uh, and we decided we would get together as a committee, uh, with the superintendent, the principal, and the A.D.s, and sit down and talk about it, so that's what we did.
And that's why we put in the, as numbers continue to change, so that we didn't shut out our girls next year, or their girls. Because I'm not so sure that they're not gonna need some assistance with some girls things next year. We talked about the fact that there's a possibility that you could play however you wanna word this, an A and a B game, a seventh grade game, an eighth grade game. I mean, you're s- you're, you're gonna gain more playing time regardless. We could play one game and play two full quarters of, you know, an- another whole game, depending on how many kids. Because we're talking, Corey's not here, I keep looking back for Corey, he's not here. Um, about thirty, possibly less than thirty kids. So you could divide it into two groups of kids and have two full games, three quarters of each, so at least, you know, kids aren't standing around doing nothing.
Well, we've had junior high A, B, and C teams.
Absolutely.
Right.
And so that's why we put that little clause in there about as numbers change, because then, you know, we get this done with the boys for next year, because it is late. I mean, we're gonna leave people hanging if this actually goes through, they'll be people without full schedules now. And then you could pull the girls in that next year and just.
You're gonna be careful of your schedule too, because if you have that many kids and you wanna play two or three games, now you gotta play a team that can.
Yeah.
Forty-seven kids to play, you can't play the teams you've been playing.
Which only makes sense, because if we're gonna go eleven man in football, we're gonna be playing them teams anyway.
If that's what they choose to do. What kinda scares me about that though, too, without a deadline on, and like Dean said, we're gonna do some junior high stuff this year, and maybe next year, and then next year, and maybe next year. Oh, now our numbers are bad, we wanna co-op the whole thing.
But I think that's where we need, where Dean's comment about having a timeline comes into play.
Yeah.
And that's why we need to meet with them. I think, because.
And not that that would be a bad thing, but in the meantime, the last four or five years, we've struggled, and that they haven't wanted to do it. But I have a feeling when their numbers go south, that's kind of an open clause, and they'll see how, how things change.
But you can, that's two ways too, you might say, well, we want commitment, but you might get anybody here and say, this ain't working for us at all, we want out.
Now, I know one thing that they were talking about is they were gonna have a community survey about this before they did anything. Had they ever had that?
No. So I'm gonna guess they're gonna make the decision based on facts that they have, and hopefully they have all of their numbers. You know, I know, was their fifth grade class the one they were concerned about? And then their fourth grade is really low?
So the, the way we go on with this is we decide whether we're, we wanna meet with them or not?
Yes.
Well, we had talked, what we talked about the other day was about, you know, if the board wanted to move forward, we would set a special meeting discussing that.
Okay, do you want?
If you wanna meet with them.
Do you want full board, do you want full, full board members, both full board members? Or just gonna be a committee?
You can't do anything in committee, you can't make a decision.
It's gotta be full board.
We go full board, then you get some public comments and find out. A little bit, okay, if I can too, if anybody's ready to figure it out.
Okay.
And I don't, why we're still on this. Due to the low numbers in Plainview and wrestling, it all hit Creighton. Now, I might be greedy, but I have a son that's gonna be a junior high wrestler, and I don't like that.
Why should it be just up there?
I'll just let him stay here and practice.
Because they have twenty some kids and they don't have a way to hold them.
That was at seventh grade.
That's at seventh period, that seventh period then.
That's why that was put in there.
So basically, you're saying they can have.
But it says it's all gonna be at Creighton.
It's not a co-op, and then.
But here's for next year.
They can have, they can have their seventh period.
With the ones that aren't competitive, they can still have that, and some of the competitive ones.
I'm not, I'm not going for, we're gonna do everything co-op.
And then, once we come together, we got to decide, hey, whatever you guys want, whatever we want, it's all thrown out the window, and we're coming together as a co-op. Right? Isn't that what we're on?
That's how it should be.
So there is a, well, since we have this, we're gonna have, no.
Every time we have somebody that has work, then they get to have it at their place then? It's either a co-op or it's not a co-op.
Exactly.
Part of that comes from transportation issues. We have one, two, three, four, five boys that are wrestling.
Okay, did that one, did I write your numbers wrong?
Well, we've signed them up, because I've gotta check, a question mark here. Okay. It's on my hand, ready, so you know.
So would you be willing to go, uh, say two-thirds there and one-third here for wrestling, given that first year to try and figure out how to make their changes?
I don't, I don't wanna have all this crap, anytime, you're gonna do it or we're not gonna do it.
Exactly.
Well, the hardest part is getting started. Once you get started and find out if it'll work, then you can add a lot easier, but.
We're gonna do it, except we want this, we want this at our place, okay? And we want this at our place. It's not a co-op then. You're either gonna do it, or you're not gonna do it.
And evidently, they needed it, they're having problems with the third, fourth, or fourth and fifth grade numbers, that's pretty soon, that's coming right up.
And if they wanna have their wrestling seventh period at their place, they can have it.
And that's what they would do.
And then when it gets to, to wrestling for the rest of the seventh and eighth graders, we're gonna share it here, we're gonna be there, we're gonna be here, and we're gonna, just like everything else. Back and forth. We're not gonna do it. That's what I, that's what I think.
You don't think they're gonna be willing to co-op?
Uh, apparently, this is what they have written down here.
Something you're, say, well, we won't interest them, then we'll just do.
We tried to put together something that we thought might possibly work now. It's gonna be up to boards.
Tash, should I?
What we wanna do is, you know, you've been, you've been sitting around, we've been talking about co-op for two years.
We still need to meet with them.
So you're, you're at a point, we were trying to get to a point where we can make something work. Now, if you're not interested, you're not interested, but.
I'm interested.
So what, what do you wanna do?
I'm not interested unless we're gonna co-op.
Which we need to sit down and tash it out with them, right?
Discuss with them.
We need to get, we need to meet.
We can talk with them.
Okay, so then what you're saying is you wanna have a joint board meeting with them?
Uh-huh.
Okay. When would you like to do that? Would you be available? Next Monday night?
Doesn't matter to me.
I, I can't, I can't be next Monday night, any other night.
Excuse me? Give me a couple minutes.
No track means next Tuesday, I don't think, is it?
Yes.
There is?
Yes. No, it's Thursday appears.
What is, nowhere off for a while. There is Thursday. Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Tuesday work?
That works for me, I'll make it work.
Well, let's put another day too, because then we have.
No.
So there wasn't a track made on Tuesday?
No, I don't know what Creighton's schedule is, I don't remember.
Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday, I would just say Tuesday or Wednesday.
Tuesday or Wednesday, it's fine with me.
Tuesday, there's junior high track, uh, New York. Williams students. Tuesday or Wednesday?
There shouldn't be anything on Wednesday, or either school.
Okay, we done with that one?
Okay.
Discuss act on preschool, junior kindergarten.
Okay, so you get it earlier, the board would need to make a decision whether you want to have two preschool sessions, or if you wanna have one session of preschool and one session of junior kindergarten. I, I would make one recommendation, if you, if you go with the junior kindergarten, I, I think you need to consider if we're doing this for students that are behind, give them more time, I think you possibly need to look at five days a week, so four days a week for junior kindergarten.
So preschool is?
Preschool, probably.
Four days.
So we have fourteen or fifteen?
I got numbers from Tammy, there's, she gave me sixteen preschoolers, six J.K.'s, and either nineteen or twenty kindergarteners. We have the feeling they can't decide if they wanna come to school or not.
Sixteen preschool.
Periods.
How many?
Six.
Six and nineteen or twenty in kindergarten.
Okay, how many of those six are, are special ed? Or do we know? Because they can, they can be in regular preschool, and they're five.
There's none, is there, Shirley?
No special ed, only the one girl that was moved.
None of those are?
No.
So we're still getting one class of kindergarten then too? So free good. So why would.
They've already signed up for this, you won't have any more sign up.
Unless somebody moves in.
Well, people move in.
For preschool, I mean.
And kindergarten. And what's the split class, second grade, we'll have them moving in second grade. That seems to be why they're flipping them out constantly.
How many are you willing to go to in kindergarten that's split?
Nineteen or twenty.
Twenty-two maybe?
Twenty-two to twenty-four, probably.
Be a lot for them, much to move in and have kindergarten.
Yeah, and it seems like everybody would get moves into that split class anyway, so.
I think J.K. is a great service for these kids that are not ready for kindergarten, instead of having to go into kindergarten and struggle. And I've seen, a lot of kids said it has helped.
Do a lot of schools around this offer it.
There's a few. Some of them got rid of it.
Creighton is a junior kindergarten, because, um, it's missing Osmond.
Elkhorn Valley got rid of theirs, no, they just got rid of it.
They got rid of others?
They went to a three-year-old preschool instead.
Could do that.
Could do that. Could do that.
Put, hire a teacher for that, I assume.
Well, no, you just wouldn't have, you would do a three-year-old preschool, a four-year-old preschool, and then you go to kindergarten. Cause I did two years of preschool and you go to kindergarten.
You wanna do JK?
We don't have the number though. There's something.
Could do with your.
Play off of that, I don't know.
I would like.
I think preschool for three-year-olds will be something that the state will begin to push more and more. I mean, there's discussion about it now, the Department of Education and the preschool area. I don't think it'll be too long before it will be where preschool was five, six, seven, eight years ago. You know, the four-year-olds are gonna start pushing the three-year-olds.
Some schools have it.
I think they're gonna have, probably start a grant program for starting three-year-old preschools, like they did in the four-year-olds.
Why do they say assuming they get into the school system, they're better off than that?
Getting away from their parents.
So, if you didn't have preschool, you'd have, I suppose you wouldn't have those JK kids then?
Well, then you'd have.
Are those kids all, better be five next year then?
Which kids?
The ju- junior kindergarten kid?
Yours is the youngest, correct, Tony?
I don't know if he is or not. He'll turn.
I think he's.
July the fifth, he'll turn five, and then the deadline is the thirty-first.
He's the youngest. Yeah, he's the youngest. Well. Yeah, 'cause I'm trying to think of my chart, I have it in there, and his birthday was at the end.
So, if you didn't have junior kindergarten, you'd have two sections of eleven?
Two sections of eight, oh yeah, I see what you're saying, two sections of.
Assuming that all of those are not five.
Yeah. But some will tend to send them up.
Some will have to start kindergarten.
Some would have.
No, no, they wouldn't. Yeah, yes, they would.
Well, they would.
They can't be in preschool at five, 'cause that's what God is.
Right.
Unless they're special ed.
Unless they're special ed, so some of those kids.
They would have to go to kindergarten.
And, and the thing on that also, if, if you have a special needs student, I, I don't think, just because they're identified with a a learning problem, it's not necessarily one to consider putting them there because of that, 'cause they, they might have a speech problem at that age, you know, it, it.
I'm just saying, legally you can.
Not really a learning problem, yeah, yeah, legally you can, but I mean, you, you still need to establish, I mean, you gotta have a good reason for it. And just, you know, 'cause you can't say you're ours or something, that's probably not gonna be considered a factor.
Why wouldn't we want JK, I guess?
Not the numbers we got here, why, yeah.
I always got some kids who truly struggle.
So, the kids that went through it last year, and now, all right, kindergarten this year, how did they do? Did they get a payoff they'd done for them?
Didn't have.
Cause I'm talking about individuals.
We didn't, we didn't have, we had JK last year.
They have JK. We stopped doing this school, you know.
We didn't have JK last year?
No, we had this. It was this, it was right now.
This year has two years, present section, we have big preschool.
Two years.
Two years.
These kindergarteners did not have JK. Don't worry.
I don't care, I mean, to me, it's a non-issue, right? Since you're having a summer teacher over for a half-day, it's still, we bought preschoolers in one class, and we don't have type teacher.
You still have two classes?
Yeah, you still have two classes.
You just have two kids?
Correct.
Ready for motion?
Yep.
I would like to make a motion to offer one section preschool and one section of junior kindergarten during the twenty sixteen seventeen school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, move the second in. Steve?
Yes.
If you.
Yes.
Self, no? Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Prove hiring a new certified staff.
Can I go back to that and just, I think maybe we need to discuss, maybe making it a decision beforehand, before the kindergarten roundup, or maybe just having JK every year?
So.
In the future, I don't know, down the road. Maybe that's something Darren wants to do.
Without Marjorie.
Yeah. Okay, excuse me, go ahead.
Or number nine, right? Yep.
We have offered the science position, who went later named Chelsea Henry, she is currently teaching cook.
Where's the part?
She is from, she's in this area originally, she graduated Pierce. If I understand it right, I think she optioned Pierce from Northport, but I'm not positive on that, but. Anyway, she wanted to come back into this area, so, uh, we do have a signed contract back, so I would recommend hiring her.
Did you have any applicants?
We had three.
What year is she?
Two.
This is her second year of, well, it'll be her, she's in her first now.
This will be her second year, she's in her first year.
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve hiring Chelsea Henry as a high school science teacher for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
I'll second it.
Move the second in, hi, Chelsea, Henry, Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Vicki?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Today is the eleventh, right?
It's eleven, yes.
April twenty, twenty sixteen. Okay, um. Act of certified staff contracts for two thousand sixteen seventeen.
Okay, at this time, we are, the administration is recommending that all of our current staff members, certificate staff members be rehired next year with the exclusion of those who resigned, which I believe it is being Mr. Anderson, this time, so, the floor's acting on his reservations.
Then you have to work out with Osman, the, the thing on them using teachers.
We'll, we'll, we'll be working out a part-time agreement sometime, I'll discuss that with Mr. Ham, I think we're planning on doing something with this.
I need to show you something. That's kinda serious.
Or just. We can have them.
Yeah, they don't, they don't bother you.
I'll figure it out by watching.
I'll make a motion to offer equivalent FTE teaching contracts for the twenty sixteen seventeen school year to all certified staff members currently holding teaching positions at Plainview Public School, with the exception of those who already resigned, which will be Mr. Anderson. Assignment of duties will be determined by the superintendent of the schools, that administrative staff, salaries, benefits, conditions of employment will be established by the negotiated master contract.
Is there a second? Okay, move the second in, myself, yes, Mike?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Motion carries. We can go on to the next one, discuss approved certified staff salaries for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. And I think you guys all, there's a packet in here that talks about that, you go look at that. It shows the advancement levels.
It's all set up, I'll give this file.
It's all set up, unless we wanted, I mean, last year we gave everybody a fifty cent rate, and then gave them three percent on top of that. And I don't know what that did to our salaries. I think, I don't think we have anybody less than ten dollars a week, I don't know how we do it.
Uh, we might have a ninety sixty-five s charging salary for.
For a new.
I shouldn't say that, 'cause unless I have it front of me, I can't say it.
Sure.
But none less than, than minimum wage, no.
But the minimum wage is like seven thirty-five or whatever.
Right, right, and then none less than the nine minimum wage that we don't even have to follow, but.
The state minimum wage.
Yes.
So, basically, we just need to decide if we wanna give them the cost of living raise. Whatever we wanna do. Yeah.
That's about the same one, we got the backside or that's got.
Yeah, it's got my scribbling on it. This is from last year. Just talks about the secretaries' wages. How high they are.
So, the, the percentage that we're looking at here was last year's, correct? Well, no, that's, that's point, that's what's recommended, or?
This is where they are right now. And some are gonna get longevity increases.
This is all longevity. All the years.
If they're at the bottom of their thing or whatever, then they're gonna move.
Yeah.
On the table, like on that table.
Right.
If they jump over that line, then they do that raise.
This is sixteen and seventeen.
That's what I was.
He's, he's put, he's put those names in where they would be longevity thing.
Right, right.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So, some of these people, well, have already moved.
Yeah.
Okay.
But just, yeah, if you just look at mine, you can see.
This is where they will be, where they're gonna.
Go from twelve to thirteen.
Go down to number ten?
Was number ten.
Rehire teachers.
Yes, that's all right.
Albert, shut your work.
I don't wanna talk about the classified staff, but.
Yes.
Any questions? What I did is I moved, hopefully I moved everybody down, this would be where they are next year, in the coming year, so I moved everybody down, so for example, when you look at the, towards the top, Tammy Ozzy, see, we put her on the first step this year because she changed positions. So, next year, she will be in her second year, which means she would qualify for a longevity, one, an unconditional one percent.
I assume that she got a raise next year, why not with that position?
Yes, we, we tried to, what I did with her was last year, Bob, cause she had been here, you know, she had service with the district, but she was starting a new position, I tried to kinda work in between someplace where it'd be fair, you know, start her, I didn't think I could, I mean, it wasn't fair to keep her where she was at, and I don't think it was fair to give her all those years' experience as a, as a secretary either, um, you know, so we worked out a thing with that to start again.
Damn. I suppose we had to do the same thing with, um, the, the other librarian.
Oh, Mark.
Oh, Mark.
Mark.
Actually, Bars was, was already a parent.
Okay.
We, we just reassigned him, parent position.
Just reassigned. Okay.
So, then, no, I didn't do that same thing for him. Cam's was because the, basically, the starting, the starting salary for the parent and the secretary are different, so.
So, do you guys just wanna go with like three, three and a half percent raise, do you wanna add money to it like we did last year, or what do you wanna do?
I'd like to just go with the cost of living raise since we didn't raise last year.
Okay. Teachers got about three and a half.
Teachers are right, three and a half or three point six.
Patty got three and a half. We go three, three and a half? Need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a basic three and a half percent salary increase for all classified staff, but additional increases as provided on the classified salary schedule.
All right.
I'll second.
Vicki?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Motion carries. We are up to?
Hot water.
Hot water here.
No, hot water.
I'm gonna ask for a light check on this one. We have a hot water heater over in the elementary that is leaking, and that's not a good situation. Gail has talked to person about it, unfortunately, as I indicated here, the hot water heater we need to put in, uh, it has to have some certain specifications, and it is fairly expensive, it's gonna be around ten thousand dollars. We're still looking to see what we can find, um, we looked, Gail's checked with Menards, checked with Mike, man to man, we had a gentleman here the other day, looked at the heater, and he said he was gonna look at it, he doesn't wanna, I think he doesn't work with Mike, he doesn't wanna, you know, get in a situation, you know, with him either, so, but we may have to do something with this before the next board meeting, so, since it's over five thousand dollars, I'm gonna ask the board to approve, as long as we can find what we think is a a fair price and will meet the specifications, then we can go ahead with it, because if it goes out, we're gonna do a hot water.
So, this has nothing to do with the heating of the boilers, it's just for hot.
It's hot water, yeah. I was rather shocked when Gail brought this in and told me what it was gonna cost.
You said he was looking where, Menards or something?
Well, he's found something Menards that I think would work.
They have the.
They gotta have a special stamp on them, if they're commercial grade, um.
Just probably a couple of, you know, hot water heaters.
Well, it's only like, uh, I'm gonna say it's a hundred gallon, they got a, let's see, this, I think it's a hundred gallon one here, but they got a fairly quick recovery.
Yeah.
And you might get them?
I think, he, he's actually, oh, he didn't do, bring this one, I'll, I've got another one that you brought in, I think.
Okay.
I wonder if they booked in, if, if they meet qualifications, I'm the wrong guy to know about that, have you seen those heat on demand units?
Yeah, they, I hear they are as good as they.
Yeah, I don't know. They're just kinda energy efficient, you know, not heating a hundred gallons of water if you're not gonna use.
All the time, you just heated one.
And I know they make smaller size and bigger sizes, but I don't know if that would work there or not, but.
Do these go to the locker rooms for showers?
This is over to the elementary.
Oh, it's over to the elementary.
This goes to the water heater, do you remember when you guys went around and around about trying to get the booster on the?
So, it's really, they need a basketball in the water to do it.
This was part of it, it talks about condensing water heaters, which I'm not sure what that is, but it's supposed to be much more efficient, I guess, so. But the thing, they gotta be vented out the top, and that's, you know, we're running.
Well, for those that would, like on heat on demand, you don't have to vent.
Some are electric.
You can get about three quart of gas, either way, that's actually good. But they would know more than I would, those people that specialize in it, not me.
I guess we can leave that up to you, what you need to get.
And they're normally, they're higher priced than a regular heater, but they're more efficient, yeah.
Like the weekend, you know, using it.
Right, and shutting down. It just seems like a lot of money for, not, not that big of a.
I agree, I was shocked when he told me what it was, but.
You can buy one for your house, fifty gallons.
Yeah, so it saved you two fifty gallons.
Five, six hundred bucks.
Hundred what?
Five, six hundred bucks.
Yeah, it'd be less than a thousand, for sure.
With the.
For two.
You know, stamps for your work.
Apparently so.
Yeah, we dig the stamp off the old.
And, I understand this right, and, and what Gail told me, if, if we put this in, and the people install and have to notify the state, they'll send out an inspector to make sure it's done right, and it's gonna have to say.
Do they know we're a school when we go to price all this stuff?
I'm sure they do.
You know what I'm saying?
So, does your, uh, your furniture outfit at Rasmussen, would they handle it like this?
I think Gail's gonna be talking, I'm not too sure, 'cause they were here today, talking about another, another deal.
We don't have much choice, huh? So, we wanna make a motion.
No, I, I think we need to look around a little bit.
Well, we will shop around and see what we can find, but I didn't wanna wait for another month before I approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, purchasing a hot water heater for the elementary.
Is there a second?
Do you wanna put out a mountain?
Yeah.
At the superintendent's discretion.
We don't have to, yeah.
There you go.
We will do it as cheap as we can. Still be required.
I second it.
So approve purchasing this hot water heater for the elementary at the superintendent's discretion, is that what the motion is? Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Vicki?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carries. Prove purchasing a new heater for the greenhouse.
Alright, this popped up after this other one did, the heater in greenhouse quit. We had Carlson's from Wausau come out and look at it and, and so. He says that one of the biggest issues with that is from the heater. He says it is, you know, the parts are just rusty or corroding and that. And he, he suggested that whatever we do, we deal on some type of maintenance type thing where they come out and check it. He was looking at a, some type of a unit that would sit outside, uh, then he, uh, come back and said that cost wise, that he wouldn't.
Yeah, if it's outside, at least you don't have to worry about all that humidity on it, like the dryer from the outside.
He is, for some reason he decided that wasn't gonna be a good deal either, so. What, what he has proposed, I think, then I put a copy of it in here.
Yeah.
In there, uh, what he has proposed would be something very similar to what is in there now. Uh, to get it installed. He did talk about having to change the size of the tubing coming in. I'm not too sure that's part of the cost here. Needs to be a little bit bigger tubing. He says the thing would run more efficiently. If we change that, so we're gonna have to do that. At the same time.
Corn's cheap, don't they have their corn burning?
Yeah, they got, they've been using a, a core heater in it, but not that you'd have in cold weather, middle of April.
Every night.
But it's up, we're gonna need to get there.
How, how long have they had that one roughly?
I have, I wanna say Gail thought maybe twelve years or something. It was here when I came, I know that, and I, we haven't replaced it since I've been here.
Was the greenhouse up when you did it?
I don't, maybe only a year or so, I don't know. So maybe, maybe it isn't quite that old. I mean, I have, I have no doubt that corrosion was a big part of it because it's gotta be tough one.
And it may, maybe it wasn't new when they put it in there, they might have found something used or somebody knew a way to enter or something, I don't know.
I'll make a motion to purchase a new heater for the greenhouse from Carlson Home in Ottawa at a price of eighteen hundred eight dollars.
Second. Move to second bid. Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carries. Activity directors report. Looks like we'll just have to look at it.
Yeah, I don't think, what Cory said, I don't think too earth shattering there. I think mostly just have schedules. And some events coming up, music contests, or excuse me, junior high. I was thinking that's Thursday, that's a concert, not contest, but concert. Then district music will be coming up. Honor band. Those types of things, rest of it I think is just scheduled. If you're looking for something to do, there's plenty to do, plenty of places to go.
Graduation, what?
Fourteenth.
Graduation is fourteenth at four P M.
And you'll have to be here three-ish for photos, for your best.
Get a tan, cause you're gonna be on a white background.
That's in the direction. Next board meeting is probably right after that.
They have to do photos this weekend.
You do it all ahead of time.
Yeah. Actually, Bradley, I was just gonna take pictures. At the ceremony, she was.
So no, well, that won't be.
Um, can I go? Because I need to quickly get back to my other post.
You got your report, then?
Uh, yes, can I go through it quick?
You're open anyway.
Okay. Um, NISA testing will start April nineteenth over here. It's reading, math, and science. Same old, same old, four, eight, uh, three through eight and eleven, take them. Um, fifth grade though takes the science one. Um, five, eight, and eleven take the science one, and everybody else takes their reading and math. Uh, writing preliminary score, they're supposed to be out, uh, this week, I think. Only schools can see them. Uh, we're supposed to look for anything that we disagree with. However, I think I just read an article that there's a possibility they're gonna be thrown out again. Because of technical difficulties with the computer.
Why don't we just quit taking, if they're gonna throw them out?
Well, tomorrow they vote on the ACT as a replacement for this, for the, um, juniors, so we'll see. Um, and I already started getting purchase orders. Uh, some people are done. They did that the day we had our last snow day, so. Uh, we had our external review team come in April sixth. Um, we don't have an official report because he had several other things going on, but. Um, he commended our staff, felt we had done a lot of very good things. Um, they gave us a few ideas. And are you gonna share more of this in your report?
Yeah, I have a couple things. I was gonna go with those from ours.
So I thought it went very well. I really wasn't very nervous. I didn't prep any teachers, I didn't prep any kids. Um, the one thing that they asked, and we had them floating around. We just had some student council kids that were a part of the interview committee and then led them around. But we made sure that they were in the hallways when the kids were there so that they could talk to any kid that they wanted. And I am very proud of one word that our kids said, they are challenged. And I was very proud of that because you know what? Not every kid, that would be one thing that they said. They also said we, they felt very close knit. They felt they could go to about anybody on our staff. And keep in mind, not every kid's gonna come and talk to me, not every kid's gonna go talk to Mr. Anderson, or, you know, but they thought they could go to elementary or secondary, it didn't make any difference. Um, they did go to the elementary and talk to elementary kids. So I didn't clue anybody in that they were coming except the group that needed to talk to them, and I didn't even tell them what they needed to do. They're gonna sit down, they're gonna ask you questions, you tell them what you think has, has gone well and what you think we need to work on. Um, the one thing I was completely surprised at is if we change our, not change our goal, but add something else to it, because I think we're okay on the reading. Oh, yeah. Um, I think we're okay on reading. I think at, at this point it's a more of a monitoring thing. Um, I look at our math scores, I have no idea where we would go with that. So we're gonna maybe look into some, we'll do our data in September and find out. But when asked the teachers, um, and this was the second group of people, which was a mixture of core and non-core, elementary, secondary. Um, if you refocus your goal, what would you, if you change your goal or add one, what would you get rid of? And they said nothing. I didn't know if I really believed that or not, but they all said, no, they really said nothing. We would just refocus our energy somewhere else. So that is a commitment to our staff. They did a great job with that and not, I didn't coach them on anything, other than tell them they had really good principal, but I don't think anyone said that, so.
So did they talk to teachers too, or just students?
Teachers, too. Two groups of teachers. And then they went in, into every classroom. We split them up into groups and half the kids took them one direction up there, and the others started over here, and then they kind of met in the middle. And then they went over to the elementary and we did the same thing. About four. And that way they could talk to the kids and, as Jawa and myself were nowhere around, they could say whatever they wanted. And they did talk to a lot of kids, so, um, I can't believe that these have to be done. Um, let's see, I have emails from teachers that emailed me today. Those are the awards on the end that the FFA kids earned. Mr. Comment sent this to me. Nathan Shute was a state champion in national rural resource speaking. Jordan Anderson is silver medal in cooperative speaking. Chris Wacker silver medal in ag literacy. Colton Showed silver medal in discovery speaking. Ag demonstration team of Austin Show, Elizabeth Comment and Brittany Pellet's got a silver plaque. And the meats team, I don't really know what that is, uh, placed in the top half, and Elizabeth Comment and Austin Show both received red ribbons and placed individually in the top one third. Katie Ziegabine received a third place medal at state convention, but now has the opportunity to go to San Diego if she so chooses because second place dropped out because it's over July fourth. I'm probably gonna try to encourage her to go because it would be a wonderful experience for her to go, but we'll see if she decides. Um, we had prom April ninth. Um, I don't know of any real big issues. Our kids were all really good. I think they're tired by the time three o'clock rolls around and they're ready to go home. Uh, jump rope for heart, they had over five thousand dollars that they made for the American Heart Association. Class C all-state music. Uh, Katie Dow, Peyton Lienfelder, Becca Comment, Clarissa Norris, and Chris Wacker. No, wrong group. Went to several music. They went to Pierce this weekend and did very well. Um, our class C all-state, that was in the paper. Um, that was. Austin Show and that group that was in the paper a long time ago. Um, NHS conducted the pennies for patients campaign. He's going to pick that money up tomorrow, I think, from classes. State speech, six qualified, five medal. Um, Miles of, and they tied for fifth, I think, or fourth, one of the two, I can't remember what it was. Miles of smiles was held April twenty ninth. Um, if you're not familiar with that program, it's a great program provided, they actually bring dental hygienist now. And the kids basically get a free dental screening that day. And then if you want them to have fluoride, it costs a, a small fee if you want them to have fluoride, but everybody gets just a little pre-screening. If you want them to have nothing major, but it's a great thing because I'm guessing it gives it, they get to go to the dentist. Um, academic contest was held November, March thirtieth. Algebra two, Brittany Wacker got first, American government Nathan showed up first, uh, Katie Rafer got first in business law. Katie Ziegabine got second in parent child development, Ricky, Brittany Wacker, small engines, third class. And we have concert, junior high, junior senior high concert for districts is the fourteenth, and April twenty second is the actual district music contest. So this is, she kind of flipped the order of things and does, um, district music before she does the variety show, so. Okay.
One quick question. I see we're the fifth administrator doing fundraisers for school field trips?
Um, that's good, that's kind of our whole elementary, um, six, or second grade through sixth grade.
So they have to fund for their field trips?
Um, it's not just field trips, it's, like the other day.
It says field trip at the top of the deal.
Well, it, and it, it's for, it's basically goes in the elementary activity account, and they've raised, we did a fundraiser my first year here.
And what do you do with that money?
Um, like we had a party for third graders because they did so well on their maps testing, so. We go and we use that for fun so that I don't have to go and ask for it to be out of the general fund. Um, they go on field trips, they get, um, their ice cream party at the end of the year. Um, the color run that we did, we paid for the T-shirts so they kids didn't have to pay for the T-shirts out of that money, or out of their own pocket, so that's kind of what we do with that stuff. And so we can have our own activities over there, just like we have a high school account, except we don't spend any money out of the activity account at high school, except for the ice cream party at the end of the year. So every, about every four years, I figure we will have to raise a little bit of money to keep being able to do fund-up fundraisers.
Yeah, forty-five hundred dollars in there now, so.
No, no, we don't.
No, it's gone?
Well, that's where, um, the pie fundraiser money goes, so. Um, that is one thing that is not in here that we just decided, they went and took the thirteen hundred dollars to, so minus thirteen hundred from there and eight seventy-five. Uh, thirteen hundred went to the Humane Society.
They just did that now?
Uh-huh, they went in April. They wanted to go when it was warm.
Oh, I see.
Because this is huge.
Went this week?
Yep, they went Saturday.
Okay.
Um, and hopefully Abby will have some pictures for the paper because this, this is a, a huge compound, and then they are going to sponsor a Vietnam veteran on that honor flight. I had a girl contact me and I, they proposed it to her, so they're giving all the money to one place, and so the kids wanted to do that. So I'm trying to find a Vietnam veteran to fit in the newspaper for me, from this town, but nobody can really give me any names. They can't, they, they won't be able to go because they didn't apply, but I just want, we want to present the check to a Vietnam veteran.
There, Steve just said.
Which prom?
Which prom, okay. Carter Scott's, uh, grandpa is Vietnam too. He mentioned that. Okay, so, um, they've not applied for the trip. I think somebody from Osmond has, and a couple from Pierce have applied.
Close now, the application?
Yes, they had too many and they're trying to decide for now who's going to go on the trip, so. I know no one from Plankville will get to go, but I figured Osmond or Pierce fairly close, um, will sponsor them, you know, that'll pay for their whole trip. And.
To Washington?
Yes, and they're gonna, we come back from close up on the fifth and they fly out on the sixth. I was kind of hoping they'd get a. Over that.
It's like the one, my dad went on World War Two.
It's just one day.
Um, every one day, they take off every morning, they fly out there and they go all over and then they.
Back on the plane.
Get home about.
They have enough to.
Four, five blocks.
They have enough donations for three chartered planes, he said, cause I've been in.
In the country or in the state or at Omaha?
State, they'll fly out of Omaha.
But they have three planes, four out of the state. Especially those, the people that take care of them.
Yeah, they have guardians, cause I've applied for that.
Take care of, my dad had a great time on that.
Gerald Frederick one, a couple years.
Yep, he went to the Korean one, I think, so. Which prom? I'm gonna go check on my project.
Okay, president's report, I don't have any. Superintendent's report.
I'll find a few more short then. I don't have anything on the board with health care. Uh, I would try to have that by next month. I did, I've only had one of the. Parents slash cooks, probably, and they were interested in it, so I would try to poll them before the next board meeting. Uh, school improvement, uh, this, we've covered a lot of this, uh. Hopefully I'm not going to duplicate things that, some of the positives, I don't think she mentioned, uh, they like what we were doing with our L J, which is kind of what we do type thing. Teachers do all, teachers go through some of that. Check for learning, good use of that, although down below they'd like to see more, I will talk about improvement areas. Uh, we like the advantage program, which is our after-school program, and the ninety-minute, um, reading block, things that they found, uh, that they were pretty impressed with. Areas of improvement, um, they talked about fidelity, they're wondering, you know, is everybody buying into, you know, all of our data and everything? Well, it's, you know, a lot of this, you kind of top down, we pretty much say you're gonna do the data, if they'd like to see, you know, more, creating more interest in it, which. You know, I think our staff is, is, uh, is doing much better with than what they used to. That is not necessarily a fun thing to do all the time, but I think it's, it's, I think they're seeing the necessity and, uh. Uh, they like to see us take the data to a little, to a little bit more of a, a higher level where we're, we're looking at more at individual students rather than looking at class, see how they're doing really big, each individual students. You know, identify students that probably, you know, need a more help and then what, what can we do for those particular students. And they suggested maybe put in a science lab in the elementary, is one of the things that comes up with it, and we're gonna look into maybe getting, uh. If, if you find it like a portable lab type thing, you know, table, we can do something with that. I think is, is the direction we will go with that. That way we wouldn't have to make arrangements for kids when we're here if they were gonna do an experiment.
You can move it from room to room.
What's that?
You can move that from room to room.
We move room to room, yeah. So we're gonna look at that. That, that was the big things I think they brought up. We will get a final written report, uh, probably within the next couple weeks on it. So they gave, they gave a fifteen, twenty minute action report is all it was, so it was very in-depth.
How often do you get this external visit?
Five, every five years now. And we were in the frameworks, we've been at the, uh, the, uh, North Central accreditation. We've switched to the frameworks one. Uh, this is a one-day visit, uh, the, the North Central is really at least an evening and a full day and maybe another extra day. I think this went very well. They do a lot of the same things and, uh, I thought we had some really good people on the team, so I thought they did a nice job. And, uh, I can't say there were any big surprises with this.
Is there any, or anything, I mean, you don't, don't get compared to other schools or?
What they do is they just kind of come in, like Patty said, they like to talk to students, talk to staff, see what's going on. They take a look at your scores and those types of things and, uh, it, it's mostly on, a, a lot of it deals with your scores anymore and what kind of progress you're making. And then what do they, what do they see when they walk around, you know, and talk to kids and so on. Uh, the other thing, just, just a question for you, we've had four snow days. I'm not concerned about our number of hours with kids. Would you like us to make up a day with the staff? You could probably put them to work.
We got, we got tons of minutes.
Well, it's not an issue about time, I, with hours with the kids. It's a matter of paying it south.
You guys didn't recommend going on a date?
Or make a payment or something?
On that Affordable Care Act though, if you don't have anybody that's really interested right now, do we still need to get a policy and say, and so if you hire somebody and they come and want it, we've got it set?
I think, I think the board is gonna have to make a decision, Mike, of what you're going to offer. And, and if everybody signs off they don't want it, that's fine, and it doesn't cost the board.
But we still have to have a policy.
I think you have, I don't know if I'd call it a policy, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to act on what you're gonna offer, it's gonna have to be in the minutes.
As far as deductible bills and that stuff.
So do we need to do that, like?
I would like to do that before I leave.
Okay, so we wanna do that next month?
Probably next month, is what I'll shoot for. I will try to get around and I will, uh, survey those staff, the, the, the cooks, kitchen staff, and the pares again and see who's interested in that. Uh, I think what we've looked at is either like a four thousand dollar conductor bollor, I think it was, it was a fifteen hundred one and the board will have to decide which one of those, probably single, policy as well. So, yeah, I can try to put that on next.
Thanks, Mark.
Um, are we gonna try and get anything done with the girls' locker rooms? Are we supposed to, are we gonna get some new lockers in there? We have talked, I've heard you guys talking about that before. Do we need to do that now, or do we need to put that on next year's budget?
I would recommend you wait a little bit, well.
Are we painting, are we painting in there though, are we painting? Does, does the boys' locker room need painting, and the elementary, I mean, are we scheduling that in? I know the elementary does.
I know that you, the one room over the elementary that you're gonna do this, so.
I'm talking about the hallways.
Hallways, I, I don't have, I haven't talked to Gail about summer projects necessarily, what they're gonna do.
That one needs to be painted though.
We talked, you know, when we did our, our tour in February, I think, we talked about the lockers and the girls, and those, those lockers are in a lot better shape than the boys', where, the thing is, they're smaller, I mean, they're a smaller locker, but there's enough of them for everybody to have to, except these bags the kids carry, you know, they don't, they don't fit it, they don't fit in a lot.
I mean, do they need to be painted, is, I haven't paid any attention.
I have, I don't think.
I think the boys', I think the boys' is needed, I have a painting.
I don't think the girls look that bad, I have to paint, I can check on them.
I checked the painting, I think that elementary hallways.
I just wondered if we, you know, if we did the boys', I didn't know if we could buy some.
Yeah, I didn't want to exclude the girls.
I, I remember at the time we did the boys', we had decided that the girls was okay, at that time that we did it.
But I'm not so sure that we don't need to paint.
I don't know about the walls, as far as the lockers.
I think we need to paint it now because it looks, and if we paint one, it has a paint.
Well, yeah, we should have done that properly when the lockers were out of there, probably should have checked in, see if the walls were painted in.
Yeah.
Uh, we painted, didn't we? Painted those not too long ago.
Did we?
Well, we did the stuff in the showers when we did that, we did the tile, maybe, I don't think we did paint them.
They did the posts in there, didn't they?
We did the posts, the deal that stood, we re, we put in, steel, stainless steel, we did the showers, yeah, they did in the both, both locker rooms.
Just like we did the. I thought women, women's looked nicer than the men's when they were done.
Yeah.
And what about those mats, were we gonna get a new mat? Like outside that door, elementary door, to the north? That door didn't shut right or something, what was wrong with that door, that elementary?
The door was rusting out, we're replacing that door.
Oh.
You talked about the north door?
Yeah, we're, we're replacing that.
That one, we have a bid on that, it's, uh, I'm gonna say around seventy-five hundred dollars, the whole thing, I was kinda looking, gonna look around a little bit.
Okay.
But that was, we just, we've had Glass Edge do most of that work, that was a bid that they gave us, I don't know if you've got anybody else? I just thought that was a little bit for.
They'll play even doors.
One side or the north side?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that one's falling apart.
Yeah. While we're on just, just discussion on that stuff, maybe with Mr. Frederick, we, he, at one time he said something about mats across the Tartan Jam. Was that ever something we're gonna pursue or not?
We got a deal on that at one time, we haven't done anything with it, I mean, that's something if you wanna go forward on, we can do that. I, I don't know what that bid was for, I don't know.
Do you have, do you redo the floor?
No, I'm sorry, say twenty-two, oh, five, I don't know.
Well, for a swing, it isn't.
If we had those, I'd build it and schedule us, let's spend the money. You know, one thing, those mats, my concern with those mats would make that gym a office wall. That's, that's could be.
Smallish.
We'll get white ones that don't go show up.
I don't want white ones.
Kids jump off of them.
No, just.
Anything else, guys? Okay, we're good.
Let's know about me.
Yeah. So you're gonna check with them and then we'll schedule a time if it works out, you'll let us know via email or something, maybe?
I'm trying to call Stephanie right now, because they're gonna be, she starts at seven thirty.
Is she not gonna be there next day?